1:00 AM, and I'm going to ask the -- hold the order and ask the clerk to please call her off.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Here.
Mr. Powers?
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mayor Madd?
Here.
To have a forum present, and we have one item on the agenda. It's a special meeting. It's limited only to it's on the meeting call, and we have a second meeting on ordinance. We did put citizen comments on for agenda items only. So if anyone wants to speak on the ordinance, they certainly may. We have the five-minute rule, which is in effect. If anyone has been here before, they know that we will enforce that. The city solicitor will keep the time, and then staff will let me know when the five minutes is up. I'll give you a five-minute sign and try to let you wrap it up and finish as quickly as you can, please. Remember, please be kind and nice to those that are speaking, whether you agree or disagree with them, and please, since this is a government meeting, don't be disruptive especially, and please try to not I know it's hard when someone says something that you really like to not clap, because we do that sometimes on the public hearings or the informal meetings, but this is a formal government meeting, and we would pass it to not do that. So if you have a comment that you would like to make, I know some people have already made comments, but for someone that hasn't, or someone that wants to repeat themselves because you just want to be on the record, that's okay. And I see Reverend Hughes speaking. Stand up to speak. You may go. Thank you, Reverend.
I'm Wadey Hughes, pastor of the West Frankfurt Church of God. Is the sound level acceptable? Can you hear?
We can hear you. I don't know if anybody else.
As I said in my opening remarks the last time, I stand before you with neither rank or bitterness, but to address this issue, which has its roots far back in ancient history. And there isn't any need to say anything in prejudiced sense or hurtful at all. The issue speaks for itself. But not prejudicial, because prejudice is that vampire suspicion that flies through the darkness of ignorance and sucks the healthy hopes of running enterprise. I'm going to just share with you very briefly this finds its roots, this issue, before us today, of whether or not to allow the 15-page or so situation that lies before you for a decision today. In Leviticus, Chapter 20, and verse 13, "If a man also alive of mankind as he alive of a woman, both of them have committed an abomination." 1 Kings 14, "And there were also sodomites in the land; they did according to all the abominations of nations, which the Lord cast out before the children of Israel." King Asa came along, and it is said of him in 1 Kings 15 and 12, "He took away the sodomites out of the land, and ruined all the idols that his fathers had made." And again in 1 Kings 22, 46, "And the remainder of the sodomites which remained in the days of his father Asa, he took out of the land." 2 Kings 23, and 7, "And he break down the houses of the sodomites, that were by the house of the Lord, where the women walled hangings for the grove." Now, in Genesis 19, where this term sodomite comes from, "The angels came down, sent by divinity, to look over the situation and bring judgment." And the Scripture tells us that they wanted to gang rape the two angels that came down. It's all in the book. All you have to do is just read it for yourself. And in Romans, Chapter 1, "Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleaneths through the lust of their own hearts, to dishonor their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God into a lie, and worshipped and served the creature more than the Creator. For this cause God gave them up twice, under vile affections, for even their women did change their natural use to that which is against nature. And likewise also the men, living the natural use of the woman, burned in their lust one toward another men of men, working which is unseemly, and receiving in themselves the recompense that was made." Now, this sodomite matter has roots all the way through the Scripture, and it was part of the cause of the downfall of the two greatest dynasties the world has ever known, Rome and Greece, and is very much alive in our society today. And whether this passage are fails today, I don't think these in that category and their sympathizer have much to worry about, because the trend is in their favor. But as a resident of the finest town I've ever lived in, and I care for this town, and my grave has already has its stone there on top of the hill overlooking this area, I beg you not to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Hughes. Ms. Libby.
One of the things that Reverend Hughes and I have in common, or two of the things, we both love this town, and we're both not good at sitting silent. Christina Libby. First, I want to apologize for any perceived hypocrisy in my getting up to speak. However, I feel the point I would like to make hasn't been made as strongly as it deserves. The point has been made that this is a civil issue and not a religious one. However, if you honestly believe that homosexuality is a sin, you cannot separate the two, and I understand that. I do not agree, but I assure you, I understand. And while I also do not agree that we are or should be solely a Christian nation, it cannot be denied that this great country was founded on Christian principles, many of which are principles found in many religions and belief structures. Those beliefs that are widely agreed upon do make their way into civil society as laws. And what is called a sin in religious texts can be translated into a crime in the eyes of a government. There have been some civil crimes which were based in religious sin that have not held up to the trials of critical thinking and the progression of human history. On the other hand, our country's history holds great atrocities deemed legal by the governments of the time on biblical standing, acts that now we have deemed against civil law and have been relegated to the basement of religious history as misinterpretations of God's word. Then there is murder, theft, and many willful acts of harm against a fellow excuse me, against a fellow human, which are seen as crimes in the eyes of God and government that have stood the test of time, logic, and reason. Obviously, not all sins in religious texts are crimes in civil terms. Our courts and bureaucracies could not and should not be the body to hold judgment there, which is what brings us here. We have people in our town, some in this room, who want to be assured that they have the same opportunity and security in service, housing, and employment as any other civil law-abiding citizen. We also have people in this town, some in this room, who want to be assured that they have the right to say no to the first group, because the employer, business owner, or landlord deems that that civil law-abiding citizen to be a level of sinner not worthy of their services, job, or board. Some see this issue as a fine semantic line between protecting someone from discrimination and forcing someone to serve, employ, or provide shelter to a person they and their interpretation of their religion deem a sinner. I see it as a bold, definitive distinction between something that should be enforced by a civil law and something that is unacceptable in a democratic society. This ordinance is not a demand to celebrate, but to not discriminate against people who sin differently than you. That is a big difference. I appreciate the commissioners who have been supportive of this, or at least open to it from the beginning. I appreciate the commissioner whose support comes from a shared belief that what Jesus Christ would have us do in this situation would be to assure people that they are not turned away at the door, but invited in. But as I said in the beginning, I understand that if you truly feel homosexuality is a sin that merits denying services despite my disagreement, I understand that is something personal between you and God. To the argument that this ordinance is a bad ordinance, whether it is because of the wording, or ambiguity, or unanswered hypothetical questions, or the exceptions, I do not understand that. I understand wanting the minutia and detail to be perfect, and I do appreciate all the thought and agonizing that has gone into attempts to make this ordinance perfect and broader. But democracy is not usually about what is perfect, but about compromise. And to deny this city this ordinance because it isn't perfect would be a mistake. Edmund Burke said that nobody made a greater mistake than he who did nothing because he could only do a little. This may not be perfect, but this language has been protecting people in other places in this state for a few years, and it has been protecting people of different race, color, religion, national origin, familial status, age, disability, and sex for much longer than that. I feel at the heart of this debate on this side of the table has been about protecting the rights of equal opportunity versus the right to deny services due to discomfort more than moral opposition. After all, if this were about denying service to the highest level of sinner in the eyes of certain local churches, I and other people in this room would have gone hungry, homeless, and jobless a long time ago. Many feel that on your side of the table, it has been about politics and catering to a base. But I honestly believe that you all have good intentions and are trying to do the right thing. My final thought is I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Dale Whiston. I'm the pastor at Harvard and United Methodist Church. And you know, there was a lady spoke here Monday night about her child, and as I was leaving the parking lot, they were making fun of her for trying to protect her child. And you know, I think this is what this is leading up to, is that this is past that stuff like this is going to happen, and that's what she was afraid of. We need more parents today to stand up for their child, their children, than protect their children today, because there's a lot of parents letting their children fall by the wayside. And you know, y'all, as elected officials, you know, I believe God has put y'all in these positions and for Christians to vote the Christian way. And I believe if y'all would vote the Christian way, y'all gonna vote no to this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitten.
My name is Phyllis Sauer. I live in the city of Frankfurt. And I will try very hard not to be repetitive. I have spoken against this ordinance once before. And I think there are two aspects of this ordinance that have been little addressed by those whom I've heard speak on it, and I've been here for almost every session except for the one that you held on a real tight turnaround I couldn't make. My objections, those heretofore unexpressed or I feel insufficiently expressed, relate to the legal aspects of this litigation, the business aspects of this litigation. First, I think, and as a lawyer, I should be rather pleased. It's good income for lawyers that you should pass an ordinance that's fraught with all sorts of indirect possibilities of violation. At the same time, I think it's not a good thing for the city. But because it can be indirectly violated, it is fraught with all sorts of litigation possibilities. I have yet to hear, in all the times I've listened to this, in answer to the question that I posed to you when I first spoke against this ordinance, how does my friend, who owns several residential units, protect herself against a charge of indirect discrimination under this ordinance? And there are plenty others like her. How are you going to know sometimes a person's gender awareness or that it is different from their biological, obvious gender? Are you required to ask? Are you requiring employers to inquire into this matter when really it should have nothing to do with their businesses? And if they don't inquire, they could indirectly violate the ordinance. If they do inquire, it's kind of suggestion that they are looking to violate the ordinance. I think you create a minefield for businesses, and you create an anti-business climate in passing this. If I had more than eight employees here, I'd be looking to get myself out of the city limits so I wouldn't have to incur the legal expense of defending myself against this. Is it fair? I've not yet heard an answer to the restaurant situation that I posed to you before. What you're doing in this ordinance is that you are taking the heretofore civil rights legislation like that in '64 and those that came after. It dealt with immutable characteristics of people and protection against discrimination. And please, I am not in favor of any kind of discrimination whatsoever as I make these comments here and as I state to you my position to this ordinance. But at the same time, you are taking a you are creating a new protected class of individuals based on certain behaviors or certain activities. And in doing so, you do something that the law heretofore hasn't done. The fact that there's homosexual, gay, lesbian activity isn't anything new, as we could glean from speakers already that you've heard many times, been going on for a long, long time. But this is the first time in history that we have given it a protective legal status over others. And why? You had to really beat the bushes here. You didn't do a study that I know of, and you really had to beat the bushes to find some reason for this ordinance to support it. I don't think we have a problem here in this community. And not only that, I don't see, I am not sure in my mind, and if I were in this kind of law, I suggest it for those who may deal with it, if you pass it, is that I'm not sure that you have the authority to pass an ordinance like this. You have, cities have a lot of independence in their grant of home rule, but that is limited to those matters that are not in conflict with state law. And in this case, the state government has declined to pass legislation like this. I don't know the answer to that question. It's not the kind of law that I practice. But I think it's something that you should know and you should consider, can you do this? And if you enact an ordinance that is in conflict with state law or what the classes that the state has decided to protect, what kind of exposure to liability do you make for yourselves, and what kind of expense do you bring on this city? Again, I'm not sure the answer to those questions, but I think it's part of the legal dilemma that this ordinance is fraught with. I thought, and the effect of it on businesses, I thought how difficult it is sometimes as a business person to decide between two people to hire. Let's say two people who are, who seem to be equally qualified for a job. And if you don't hire one of them, because, or in a layoff situation, there's a lot of those these days because of economic climate, and you let, you have to let off somebody, and you have to choose between two people who are seemingly the same, have the same qualifications for the job, and you don't know that there are gender awareness problems, you're in trouble under this statute, if you, under this ordinance, if you dismiss someone or don't hire someone who has this gender awareness problem or who has a gay or lesbian partner. Another situation, and there are millions of them that we can think of. It's really easy to think of ways that you can get in trouble and that lawsuits are going to result under this ordinance. What, for example, if you have made it clear to your employees that you don't want time spent on the job on the telephone, or texting, or emails, or other things, and let's say that a gay or lesbian couple have been doing that significantly one day, and let's say another employee does the same thing that day, and you fire, you fire the couple, the gay or lesbian employee. You don't fire the other one. But let's say that the other one had a family emergency of some kind. Their child was involved in something. How are you going to defend yourself against things like that under this ordinance? I don't know. I think that it is
Solicitor said the time was up. I was going to let you finish.
I will wrap up. The final thing I'd like to say is that your sincerely held belief under this ordinance is not going to be an effective defense against the ordinance, not only because of difficulties in definition, but also because the courts in some places are striking conscience rights, and when that happens, you have another grave problem with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Madsen.
Can I ask Phyllis Sauer to explain that last statement? I'm not exactly sure what she means by that. Could I ask another question?
If she'll come back up and ask her question, you should, Commissioner. You don't have to, but she's, and recognize, former mayor, John Sauer, thank you for being here. Always good to see you.
What I meant was, you have a defense under this ordinance based on a sincerely held religious belief. But if the federal courts strike conscience rights protections, then that is going to afford no protection to anyone under this ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sauer.
My name is Sherri Streeter. I'm actually a resident of Lexington. However, my work and my friends with family here often bring me to Frankfurt, so I would be covered under the public accommodations aspect of this ordinance. And I just wanted to point out that I've been to a couple of these meetings, and I've heard person after person say, you know, there's no need for this ordinance, there's no evidence of discrimination happening in Frankfurt. However, we hear person after person say that they should have the right to refuse to employ people because of their sexual orientation and gender identity, that they should be allowed to refuse to provide housing for people because of their sexual orientation and gender identity, and that they should refuse to do business with individuals because of their sexual orientation and gender identity. And I don't know what more compelling evidence you need than the strong opposition to this ordinance and, you know, individuals just really adamant that they should be allowed to discriminate against individuals who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, asexual, however they identify. So that's really all that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, too, Ms. Streeter.
Hi, my name is Martha Roberts. I'm just an average citizen. I don't, I'm not a preacher. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a retired individual that's lived here for a number of years. I don't have much to say, except that I do support the ordinance, because an example I can give you of discriminatory act that has nothing to do with what everybody's talking about right now, the focus seems to be primarily just on LGBT community. I have a biracial son who has been discriminated against before, and the way he's been discriminated against is that he is significantly overweight. And I feel as though he's been discriminated against for job hiring because significantly overweight people are considered health risk by some employers, or they're considered to be lazy because they're overweight. And I feel like this is a good ordinance, and I'm the kind of person that believes that we should all care for each other, no matter what your background is. It has nothing to do with religion. I'm not a religious person. I'm proud to say I'm agnostic, and I do believe in treating people fairly, and I think the ordinance is very important, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Ms. Streeter.
Yes, my name is George Barnes, and I'm just a Christian. And my God tells me not to discriminate against anyone, to love everyone, regardless race, creed, color, sexual orientation. The problem I have is when one person on this council, obviously, who's voting on this fairness act, is discriminating against one certain form of people, when they made the comment about old white people. To me, old white men, excuse me, you know, to me, there's old white men on both sides. So how can someone that is voting on a fairness ordinance say they're qualified to do this when they have discrimination in their heart? And one other thing, I've heard people come up and say if they were atheists, well, obviously, if you're an atheist, you don't believe in God. Well, the way I look at that is that if there is no God, you don't have nothing not to believe in. So how can you qualify yourself? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Streeter.
This has been a long ordeal, haven't it?
Yes, sir.
We were warned it might be. My name is John Sauer. I had the opportunity to address three members of the city commission at a work session over a month ago, and I am a resident of Frankfurt. My wife earlier mentioned the legal aspects of it, and I decided to do some research, which I shared with, again, three members over a month ago, that laws sometimes have unintended consequences. And the following are some of the future consequences that the community may suffer. There's some examples that I cite. New Jersey Ocean Grove Methodist Church loses tax exempt status for refusing to host a civil union ceremony. Virginia businessman forced to duplicate homosexual films. California doctor to provide in vitro fertilization to lesbian woman. In Florida, transgender mechanic wins lawsuit for the right to dress as a female while transitioning on the job to female. In Ohio, Cincinnati, Ohio, the Sixth Circuit, transgendered police officer was awarded $322,000 for workplace discrimination based on dress code. Also, in Ohio, a firefighter wins on-the-job transition case in Smith versus the city of Salem. And finally, even the D.C. Library of Congress discriminated against a transgendered woman in employment decisions. These are some of the cases, and some of these cases, the local jurisdiction even had a conscience-like clause in them, and they were still overruled by a Supreme Court or a court of appeals. It's just some of the unintended consequences that I think legislation like this can have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Richard Kincaid, and I'm a citizen of Frankfurt. I'd like to say good morning to everybody here on both sides of the aisle. I wrote down notes and, you know, tried to give something, so I'm going to keep this pretty simple. Fifty years ago, Martin Luther King led millions to Washington to bring about change. Today, we have an African-American president. Martin Luther King had a dream, and, you know, we can get into the situation of lawsuits. We can get into situations of the Bible. Judge not lest ye be judged. And I know that there are people that think that this is a vehicle to promote a gay agenda. That is not true. Each and every one of us have a right to be treated fairly. I want to bring about, and maybe if you have time and interest, it's called Tom Bridegroom. Him and his partner, he was from Indiana somewhere. And him and his partner had built businesses together, traveled the world together. So unfortunately, Todd died. And the way the laws were written, the businesses were taken away. Tom's partner was left alone. They took every bit of the money out of the bank account. They took the property. They took the business. And Christians are supposed to help and love.
Oh, Mr. Kincaid, reduce mine. Sorry, directing the comments this way, but can we?
Okay, okay. And, you know, I hope that all of you on the board today will pass this, because it's an important piece of legislation. It's 2013, and there are a lot of good people in this town. There are a lot of people that have homosexuals in their families. Think about those people. I ask that you pass the ordinance. This is not going to be an agenda for gay people. Today, you have an opportunity with a vote. Today, you have an opportunity with a vote to continue the dream of Martin Luther King. Gay and lesbian people, transgender, all these people, they have rights. Please afford them the rights, because I can't, I can't believe that in our country there was a time where there was a sign on the wall, black, white. I ask you, if you are sick, and I'm your nurse, does it matter if I'm homosexual or straight or bisexual? I would say that the answer is probably no, because I would revive you, I would take care of you regardless of what you were, who you were, how you acted in your own private time. God bless each and every one of you, and thank you for listening this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Kenpade.
I'm Gary Hager, pastor of Westview Baptist Church. I stand in opposition of this ordinance. I would like to share some thoughts with you this morning. The pretense of tolerance is over in the days leading up to World War II. Winston Churchill in a speech to the Royal Academy said, "No large organization can long continue without a strong element of authority and respect for authority." On Valentine's Day weekend 2004, San Francisco Mayor Calvin Newsom, in an open defiance of the rule of law, ordered his county clerk to issue marriage license to same-sex couples despite the state law Proposition 22 passed by the voters in 2000 that defines marriage as between one man and one woman. Eventually, nearly 4,000 same-sex couples were issued marriage license and were married by government officials. If taken to its logical conclusion, this open contempt for authority and the rule of law could lead to a social anarchy where no laws are worth the paper they're printed on, the words of Churchill would become prophetically real for America. The ADF and its allies immediately spring into action to stop the unlawful actions of this mayor, Newsom. The ADF attorneys were literally shuttling back and forth from San Francisco on an almost daily basis, as well as spending late night after night as other open challenges to many spurred by Mayor Newsom's action, started to rear their heads in Oregon, Washington, New Mexico, and North Carolina, to name only a few of many states where homosexual activists were on full court press for same-sex marriage. After a series of frustrating setbacks in the courtrooms of San Francisco, the ADF filed a direct action with the California State Supreme Court on behalf of California taxpayers, and the high court eventually halted in a seven-to-zero vote the assurance of the invalid licenses. They set a two-hour oral argument to determine the legal validity of the license on May 25, 2004. In Oregon, they issued more than 3,000 invalid marriage licenses until they were halted by the ADF legal action in April 20, 2004. On that day, the ADF senior counsel, Jordan Lawrence, appeared before the California State Supreme Court to defend state law and argue that so-called license to be declared invalid. Jordan noted that if a elected official can ignore or defy one law, then all other laws are in jeopardy. Within 30 seconds of her opening statement, opposing counsel Teresa Stewart, a lesbian, the deputy city attorney for the county, city and county of San Francisco, found herself grilled by the chief justice, Ronald George, on this very point. Even in a liberal court, in a liberal state, was not going to buy the argument that an elected official can openly defy the law. On August 12, 2004, the California Supreme Court argued that Jordan's arguments in a seven-to-zero decision ruled that the mayor of San Francisco had overstepped his authority when he directed the city and the county clerk to issue marriage license. In addition, the court, in a five-to-one decision, declared the license that had been issued to be invalid because the mayor had no authority to issue them. According to Newsom, his marriage decision was made on the spur of the moment when he heard that President George Bush expressed support for the federal marriage mandate during his annual State of the Union address. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have two commissioners that need to get to, do you all have time for one more person, or?
Yeah.
We can do one more, then we're going to vote, and then we can, we'll stay. The rest of us that can stay, we'll stay and let you make remarks.
No, you said just one more.
Well, I did. I represent, I asked him, I pointed at him.
You're not going to let me speak?
You're going to speak.
I just, we have some time. It's just, I do have.
All right, I thought you were cutting it off.
No, no. Well, we're going to, we're going to let, go ahead.
So, we don't have any time left to make remarks?
I don't know how long the commissioners.
Yeah, I, I just need to leave by nine o'clock. That's all I'm, that's all I'm trying to say. So, I just sent the mayor a note saying I need to leave fairly soon. We still have 20 minutes.
Okay.
And I really do appreciate all the, all the public input. I have a patient I can't call my work and reschedule my patients.
And just remind everyone, we've spent hours and hours listening, and many folks have already spoken once, and we're being very lenient about letting people speak again. Go ahead.
Chuck Queen. In response to the argument that this creates a protective class, I'm no lawyer, but it just seems to me that this ordinance extends protection, that extends protections that we already have to a group that has traditionally been marginalized and discriminated against. And as a Christian minister, you know, I have to say, I really find it embarrassing all this abuse and misuse of the Bible. I love the Bible. I've spent my life studying the Bible, and it is a book of competing and conflicting theologies and perspectives, and it can be used as an instrument of oppression, or it can be used as an instrument of liberation and transformation. And we have just celebrated the 50th anniversary of Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech, in which he and those civil rights marchers used the Bible as an instrument of Despite all the craziness that we've heard, and all the fear and insecurity and animosity that has been expressed, this ordinance is really an ordinance about inclusion, it is about equality, it is about fairness, it is about banning discrimination, and I think it is appropriate that you have an opportunity to pass this ordinance on the week that we do celebrate Martin Luther King Jr.'s speech, "I Have a Dream," and in a small way, have an opportunity to advance that dream on a local level.
Hello, my name is Margaret Raymond, and I am a resident of Frankfurt. I am also a Christian and very proud of it. I believe in the Bible. I believe every word of the Bible, and, but, not just that, but first of all, I do want to say that God loves everyone. That's why He sent Jesus to die on the cross for us, to bear our sin whatsoever. In John 3:16, it says, "For God so loved the world that He gave His only begotten Son, that whosoever believeth in Him shall not perish, but have everlasting life." First of all, everyone has a right to everything, to housing and everything, but in the original ordinance, it says, okay, don't discriminate on race, age, religion, and I forget all the other components, but this sexual orientation, which you're calling homosexuality and other deviant sexual behavior, doesn't that fall?
We're not saying, ma'am, I'm going to correct you, it's not, we're not saying anything about deviant sexual behavior in this ordinance. It's a broad category.
When I took a psychology class years ago, homosexuality was classified as deviant behavior.
Under the law, ma'am, we're discussing law right now, and I need to correct that this has nothing to do with any type of sexual behavior.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Most people, though, regardless of religion, regardless of race, would agree with me that homosexuality is not normal behavior. It's not something that most people are born with. I did take a lot of psychology classes, and most of the people who become homosexual is because of crazy situations in their families. I can give you several examples of that, where maybe a girl was raped by her father, and that she wanted to just have relationships with women. I actually sent Commissioner Bowers a letter, giving some examples of how people became homosexual. There was one lady who had an abusive father, and then she had two abusive husbands. After that, she was afraid of men, so then she started a relationship with a woman. But it's not natural, and, you know, by recognizing it as such, you're not helping the people. You're not helping the people that are in those situations, because most of them are psychologically mixed up. I love everyone, but when people are doing something that's not natural, it's not good for them, it's not good for the other people around them, and it's also giving a wrong example to children and the grandchildren. We need to have rules. We need to have morals. We need to know what's right and what's wrong. If you say this is an acceptable behavior, children are going to grow up thinking that, like, a little girl won't know whether she's supposed to be a little girl or a little boy. They're going to have, they're going to have a lot of confusion, and there's going to be a lot of trouble in our society, because the family, as traditionally known with a mother and father, are going to be destroyed. And also, the morals are going to be destroyed, because it's been proven that people who are homosexual, a lot of whom have multiple partners, and I know heterosexuals do, too, but it's even more with homosexuals, and that's been proven. And that does not promote a family. It also goes against God, and, but, I have a couple atheist brothers, and they don't, they say they don't believe in any God at all or any religion, but even they have the morals to know that a couple are a man and a woman. That's the way, that's the way we're made, and our pots fit together just right. But when two women get together or two men get together, it's crazy. And this is not something that should be put in there as an alternate lifestyle. It's not acceptable to most people. And if they want to do it, fine, but don't make it, don't endorse it, all right, because it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. It is 8:45. Commissioners, do you have any comments you all would like to add?
Well, Mayor, have you done a reading?
No.
Are we wrapping up citizen comments?
I think most people have spoken at least once or twice, and sometimes three, four, or five times.
I am aware of that. I just wanted to make sure that we're done with citizen comment.
And we'll stay after, I mean, if folks want to stay and?
I am supposed to be at work, but I will stay as long as we need to stay to, I don't want to cut people off, but Commissioner Haddon doesn't have that option. She's got a patient, so. The only reason I ask the question, I'm going to propose my amendment one more time if we're through with citizen comment.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I'm going to propose it one more time, because I think it's important to, when we do something of this magnitude, and the magnitude is demonstrated by the people in the room at eight o'clock in the morning, and by the diligence, the group has lobbied, and the opposition has lobbied, people in this city are interested in what happens with this ordinance, and I think, because I know that, or I believe it will pass, it needs to be done correctly. And we have been told that we are going to be a leader in this. In fact, we're not. This is a national wave, sweeping the land, and we are not leading. We will be entering a float in the parade, if you will, and there's nothing wrong with the parade, and there's nothing wrong with having a float in the parade, but you want your float to be done well. And I want this ordinance to be done as well as it can be done, since I believe that it is going to pass. It is important to protect everyone with this ordinance. We have civil rights legislation. We have protected classes that, on the surface, within the definition, look like they protect everyone, but in reality have been practiced as retaliatory when they get decided in court. I do not want a piece of retaliatory legislation coming out of this city hall. So, Mayor, I'm going to propose, one more time, that on the definition, gender identity, the definition in this ordinance be struck, because indeed, it is a definition of no concept, of which I am aware. This definition does not define anything. It is a definition that I was told was drafted in Louisville, and wish that Louisville had done a better job. So, I'm going to move that we strike that definition, gender identity, and replace it with one psychological sense of being male or female. And that way, everyone in our population will be protected by this ordinance. As it stands now, we don't have a definition that defines a concept. I think the intent of this definition is to protect certain people in the population, and that doesn't work for me. If I am going to be a part of something that I'm told is history-making, and it will be, but we're not a leader in it, we're just going along with the way, then I want it to be done in a way that our population feels protected, no matter what their gender identity. So, I move that we strike the definition of gender identity in the ordinance, replace it with one psychological sense of being male or female, and that way, well, let me stop there with that, with that one amendment. So, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
A second. But I would just like to add, I would, Commissioner Bowers, I would appreciate if we could just pass the ordinance today and then make amendments, if possible.
Well, my problem?
I was hoping the definition changed. I will.
Well, my problem with that is, I think that we need to do it right. In other words, if we know that there's a problem, I think we need to fix it before it passes, and I appreciate your saying that and willingness, and I believe you, but I believe that this is so important. We have been talking about this since our work session in January, but in January, it came to us as a human rights commission, and somehow it evolved into this, but that doesn't surprise me. This is the second. This is the second term that I've served during which this issue has come forth, and I understand it came to Gippy Graham, Mayor Gippy Graham, last term. So, I know that this is an issue that's important to a lot of people, and I know that it won't go away. And so, when it passes, I want it to pass in such a way that we all feel protected by it. And let me just say, I too am a Christian, and I'm not gonna preach a sermon, this is not the time or the place, but I appreciate Commissioner Haddon's comments the other night. This is a government body, and there are people in our city that are atheists, that are Hindu, that are other things, that are Jewish. And we have to respect everyone, because we're all gonna live together. And, and let me just say, adding on to that, I think for this issue to be as controversial as it has been, I am so impressed with the civility of people on both sides of this issue, and I just wanna commend this group that's lobbied for this, because you all have been so kind to me, whereas you could've been really nasty to me with, you know, within my head, I'm looking at this from all different angles, and you could've become impatient, and you didn't. And so, I really appreciate that. I appreciate all the citizens who have walked into my yard to tell me what they think, who have called me, who have emailed me, and all those citizens who have responded when I have asked. So, I guess I went on a little longer than I thought, but I do think Commissioner Haddon, the whole commission, if we're gonna do this, we need to take it seriously and do it correctly. There's no point in not doing it correctly. There's no point in passing something that, in our hearts, we think we need to come back and amend. So, I guess, Mayor, you have a first and a second?
We do?
We do.
Any discussion on the proposed amendment?
Just very fast, the, I'm gonna vote no, not because I don't respect Commissioner Bowers' understanding of these type of things, which is far greater than mine, but since I'm opposed to the ordinance, I think it just sends a mixed message, so that's why.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I just wanna speak against the amendment for today. Commissioner, I'll commit, if this ordinance is passed today, I will commit to supporting an amendment at our next month's meetings.
Mayor, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why would you not wanna, correct it, or why would you not want to have it in proper form today? What would be the reason?
Well, I think that we're dealing with identity, gender identity definition that has stood up in other cities for several years, and has not been challenged or struck down much like we did on the smoking ban years ago. We wanted to wait to see how the case in Lexington went before it passed, so we modeled, we tried to model laws off of other laws that have stood the test of time. And that is my only reason, and I wanna move forward, because we've talked about it so long, and I'd like to get the main issue voted on.
May I ask you one more question?
You sure may.
It's been almost eight months. Is 24 hours more gonna really be a problem?
Yes.
Well, here's my position. I will not be able to vote for this ordinance in its current state, because it's, it's a bad ordinance. Your definition defines nothing. And since this whole ordinance is built around gender identity and sexual orientation, those two definitions need to be a correct definition. When you have an ordinance that defines nothing, you have a worthless ordinance. I don't know how in the world the courts would deal with this, unless they are misguided and impose the wrong interpretation upon a definition that defines not gender identity or sexual orientation. I believe the intent of this ordinance is to protect certain people, but not all people. And that's a problem for me. And I'm simply asking that this be drafted to protect all people. I think our country has seen a lot of legislation that, in essence, is retaliatory. We can take a leadership role here today by saying no. We are for equal rights, we are for people being treated fairly, but everyone needs to be treated fairly. So, I cannot vote yes today. If my amendments pass, I can. So, that's my position, so.
Thank you. Any other members?
Mayor, we call my second.
Oh, yes, you may. That motion does.
Mayor, I would like to propose the second amendment.
Okay, Commissioner?
The definition of sexual orientation, I stated way back when this verse came to the table, asexuality needs to be included there with heterosexuality, homosexuality, and bisexuality. Because once again, you are leaving a segment of the population out of this definition. And let me just point out once again, final time I'll point it out, I guess, because it's gonna pass here in a few minutes, there is no parallel in defining between sexual orientation and gender identity. In sexual orientation, you include heterosexuality, which is the norm, and when I speak of norm, I'm talking about the bell curve, the majority. Norm and bad do not equate. Just because one is not within the majority does not mean that there is something wrong with one. When we think of concepts like intelligence, we think genius is great. That's not normal, that's not the norm. So, we need to look at people with different orientations as equal in the sense that they need to retain the same rights that we all have, and they need to be treated fairly. Are they like the rest of us? No, but thank God, we're not all alike, because if we were all alike, we would not have the luxuries that we have today, the technology that we have today. We need difference, and we need people to be not normal. So, one needs to say, let's not confuse norm with right/wrong. But once again, you've got a lack of parallelism in your definitions, the two definitions about which this whole 15-page of ordinance is centered. And to spend eight months on something and not to be able to correctly define something and protect everyone in the population makes this whole thing a farce. So, I plead with you one more time, Commissioners, to do the right thing. So, there's my second amendment, that the definition of sexual orientation include asexuality.
Is there a, is the motion, is it a second? Same on that motion does. Are you all ready? Anyone else wanna make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the ordinance as written.
Second.
That's Commissioner Haddon, second by Commissioner Haynes. We'll ask this listener to read it by title and summary only, please.
By title, an ordinance amending Chapter 96, Fair Housing, Section 96.01, 96.02, 96.03, 96.04, 96.05, 96.06, 96.07, 96.08, 96.09, 96.10, 96.11, 96.12, 96.13, 96.14, 96.15, 96.16, 96.17, 96.18, 96.19, and 96.99 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. By summary, this ordinance amends Chapter 96 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. The Fair Housing Ordinance was amended to prohibit discrimination against individuals on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation, to prohibit discrimination in employment and public accommodation, to exempt religious institutions from the provisions of the ordinance regarding gender identity and sexual orientation. Section 9611 contains the references to, the reference to KRS 446.350, protecting a person's exercise of his or her religious rights. The mayor or fairness officer may resolve statements filed alleging discriminatory treatment under this chapter. Formal complaints alleging discrimination on the basis of other than gender identity or sexual orientation may be filed with the State Human Rights Commission for enforcement. Formal complaints alleging discrimination on the basis of gender identity or sexual orientation, which include additional allegations of discrimination, may be filed with the local Human Rights Commission for enforcement. A seven-member City of Frankfurt Human Rights Commission is created with the power to determine violations of the fairness ordinance. A hearing officer would conduct any formal hearings and issue findings of fact, conclusions of law, and a recommended order. The Human Rights Commission would then accept the recommended order or revise it as deemed necessary. There is no automatic right of appeal from the decision of the Human Rights Commission. Individuals that are the subject of illegal discrimination may file a complaint directly with the Franklin Circuit or District Court, and the penalty section is set forth in Section 96.99.
Thank you. And before you vote, if the girls' attorney's out, I would ask everyone to please remain reserved when, after we vote. We are working, our staff is working today, and this is, as I said, a government meeting. If people wanna say step in the parking lot or in the front of the building, feel free to do it, but inside the room, please respect power of government rules. Any discussion? Commissioner?
I had a number of things to say, but, but I believe if Commissioner Haddon needs to leave in a minute, so I think, I think, and if she leaves, then I assume it would die again, and I don't think that's probably the right thing to do. So, the only thing I would say, very quickly, to Commissioner Bowers on the amendments, I understand those, but one thing I think we've not discussed is there are oodles, just like you've said, there are oodles of people that are discriminated against. I don't think it's possible to create an ordinance that would deal with all those things. I know you're trying to make it broader, but I think that would be difficult. Very quickly, one, one, one class can be discriminated against in housing is cohabitation, and they're not a protected class. So, there's a whole lot to this, but anyway, I'm done, I'm ready to move on to something else.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Not, I'll ask the clerk, please call him.
Mr. Rhodes?
No.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mr. Bowers?
Can I just make a statement?
You vote and then make a statement.
My vote is no, because my two proposed amendments did not pass, and my amendments were not trying to do anything outside the scope of the two concepts that we are legislating today. My amendments were to just be all-inclusive within those concepts. What you have here for the definition of gender identity is not the definition of gender identity by any, you know, academic, professional, textbook, dictionary definition that I've ever seen, and I teach this subject matter. So, what we have here today is a worthless ordinance to address gender identity. I can't vote yes for something that I think is, quite frankly, stupid. It's gotta be done correctly, because, you know, I have spent too many hours, hours, thinking about this, listening, meeting with people, actively getting opinions. I don't take my job lightly up here. I realize that any vote I take on this issue and many other issues will, you know, frustrate, disappoint my citizens. And so, this is a very difficult job to do, because on this issue, I have very dear friends on both sides of this issue, and it's not been an easy issue, because I have to put that there and think about what is the really right thing to do. And that's what I wanna do, the right thing to do. So, this needs to be drafted correctly for me to vote yes. To those of you who have lobbied for this, I wish I could vote yes. The ordinance is not in the shape that I can. To those of you who are disappointed in my vote and my statement that I could if it were done correctly, I genuinely apologize for disappointing you. I have to do what my heart directs me to do, what my head directs me to do, what those two things together direct me to do, and it's been quite a struggle for me. But my vote is no. And to reiterate, my amendments were not to include anything outside of the concept of gender identity and sexual orientation. It was to make those more inclusive. So, no, but thank you all for being civil, and I think that Frankfurt is a city where we are accepting, and we do care about each other, and I don't think that there is a huge problem with discrimination. What this ordinance hopefully will do, if they amend it later, will ensure that there never will be a greater problem. So, I would just ask us all to, when this passes, to put it behind us, try to live together civilly and love, and I think we do, and let's continue that, but no.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Haddon? Yes. Mayor, may I?
Yes, ordinance adopted. Thank you, everyone.
I move for German.
Move back, Commissioner Haynes, second by-
The name's Lynn.
Second, Commissioner Bowers. Please call her out. No discussion? Okay, but call her out.
Mr. Rhodes?
Other people I might ask. Sorry, German.
I move for German.
I move second.
Yes, they voted in favor of it.
The German?
We voted for that.
Yes.
Take care of your patients.
Sorry.
Take care of your patients.
I'm sure, I'm sorry, we're still.